I'm the one who wanted to put him on the other side.
Could you imagine that being a kerfuffle?
Yeah, it surprises me a lot of times the things that draw the ire of people or don't. That was one I did not expect.
So you didn't?
He didn't expect it.
No.
I guess I sort of wondered whether anybody would care. I mean, you know, we're touching this thing, but...
You guys are the experts.
Well, there you go. Now you know.
Now you're here backing away from your expert status. There we go.
I was surprised. I did think the...
Phil, you had a name for that poll that woman put up. What did you call it? There was a... Where it's not really an effort to gauge your opinion, it's...
You know, when I made a clever remark, I hardly remember what the heck the humor was the next minute, but it was a false poll, you know. It was simply a gathering of oppositional data.
That's what I thought too, but you had a term for it.
Yeah, if it comes up, I'll let you know.
I don't have the old handwritten notes. I've been being better about getting rid of them quickly, but if I missed that day, I will look.
It's part of the... I had one other. I had two things to ask her and I forgot your thing. Hang on. She's coming down on it.
It's part of the reading medical information in the paper and saying, "Oh, the statistics for that are so bad."
Yeah. Well, I've gotten really sensitive to surveys and polls and stuff because I find... I guess I've gotten jaded. I find often they're phrased in a way that there's only one way to answer.
Are you upset that they're taking all of FEMA money to give to Ukraine? Yes or no?
Correct. That's exactly. And then sometimes I just throw that stuff out.
Well, I worry about the sampling because nobody that I know answers those phone calls, picks them up, and is willing to give people opinions. So who is actually saying okay? And are they advocates for one thing or another? And how are they accounting for that? And can you actually correct those errors statistically? I'm getting less and less trusting of the figures I see.
They're coming to my side of the table. Yeah, that's... I kind of feel that way too.
Untrusting enough that I've sent out 240 get out the vote letters through Vote Forward.
Oh, wow. Good for you. Yeah.
It'll let you target particular states and do it 20 at a time to Georgia or Pennsylvania or North Carolina or wherever they're saying that it's really close and it's a swing state.
Yeah. Interesting.
Vote FWD.org.
Oh.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Ben.
Morning, Ben.
God, is it cold in here? Is it neat?
Well, I have a sweater on and I'm okay, but he's got his jacket on. Do you want...
I'll keep it on too.
I took it off because I was...
That knee brace ever helping with that?
It felt good, but it was... It was still like a cucumber.
You just have Jordan and that's like Jan.
I don't wear one today. I wear them sometimes, but December 5th, they're gonna do the third operation on this state.
No fun.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. Jan, you're with us and we have Rich and Phil with us. And it is 10:04 on the 10th of October. I do believe this is Canadian Thanksgiving Day.
Ooh, let's have a turkey.
Yes, or something.
They're thankful that they didn't join us.
Yes. So I will open the public session for comments to Jan, if you have some.
Yes, Judy, I would like to have a copy of the revised MS-1.
Okay. I believe if you send an email to either Dina or Jordan, you will get one.
I'm waiting to hear from the DRA before I release anything to make sure.
It hasn't been approved.
Right.
Okay. Did you hear that? She's waiting for final approval and then she will release it.
Okay. Just, you know, it is a public document, so I should be able to get it now.
Okay.
You want one that's incorrect or you want the crushed one?
I want to see the updated one, Ben.
All right. Well, then wait a day or two.
Okay. Thank you, Jan. We will do our best to get that to you. Do you want to come in and pick it up or do you want to have it emailed to you? Can we email it?
Yeah, we'll let her know. Yeah. Yeah, I have a couple other people too, so.
You have a list. Add it to the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
I have nothing.
Okay, Rich, we have you on in a little bit.
And I have nothing else, so.
Okay, very good. Well, we did put this down for 10:15 and it is 10:06, but if we don't have an objection, Mr. Brown, we have the floor.
That sounds great. So I'm gonna hand you all some paper to read at your leisure. I'm gonna talk about it and then, Dina, I have a copy for you as well, but I'll use that as... So you probably know that...
Thank you, sir.
Lynn and I were denied a variance to put a propane tank in our yard. The issue is that the ordinance prohibits buried fuel tanks in Shoreline Conservation District, which is as far as 200 feet from Postmont. And so I requested a variance to say it'd be a real hardship to try to put the tank someplace else. And that variance request was rejected.
But you'd already put the tank in or not?
I did. I did.
So you didn't read the ordinance first?
I certainly did not read the ordinance and so, okay, that's my bad. And nonetheless, I would still... So it would have prohibited me from doing it. I would still be here with what's in this packet. First two pages are my request for variance. Third page is a petition for change to the... Change the ordinance. And basically that's gonna say, "We changed that section to say that no underground oil tanks," and that's an important word, and I'll come back to that, "as defined in NHRS-A blah blah blah. Our permitted propane and natural gas tanks are excluded from this provision." And the reason I say that is the final page, same color. The final page is the state page that talks about fuel storage tanks and buried tanks. And at the bottom, I put that red box around it, but it says, "For natural gas and propane, talk to your local officials." I've spoken with David Robbins, who says this is not a problem that I have. I have a note, a request out to Aaron and to Mike Hensley to see if they have any concerns. I have a bunch of signatures on petitions, but I'm waiting to blow it out till I hear back from Mike Hensley to see what's there. My request... So my request to the board is that you give me forbearance on adhering to the ordinance until the petition gets voted on. It's in mark coming up in March. If clearly... Well, first off, I missed a step. I wanted to say, there's no harm. There are no national standards. There are no New Hampshire standards for placement of propane or natural gas tanks, underground tanks. So I don't think there's any harm to the town being done now. In fact, our... The guy, the propane installer, just said, "Oh, yeah, that's a great place to put it. It's easy to get to." And so I think he would be critically aware. So my request for forbearance is that let's let the town vote on it. If the town says, "No, we really don't want to change the ordinance," then of course I will comply. If the town says, "That seems like a perfect, perfectly sensible change to the ordinance," I can then continue to use the tank that's there.
Did you... So you didn't have a permit when you installed it?
I did not, yes.
So technically it is a structure. It's in the Shoreland setback. Is that a stream that runs?
So David, I spoke... David and I have spoken about that. He says that he's willing, that he would declare that to be a seasonal stream and that that would not come into play. So the thought would be either make an above-ground tank,
There.
which I would put close to the road just so it's easy to fill, or I'd have to dig a big trench up. And part of the reason that I requested the variance is there's a bunch of ledge up the hill from that location, which could be a challenge.
And where is the generator located?
So the generator's on the north side of my house. The fourth page of the application has a picture.
Oh, I saw that quickly.
So you asked this question. So the north side is the side away from the lodge. And it's tucked in close to the house and it's a great location for the generator. And so that's where it is. To move the tank obviously involves a lot of expense. And I'd just as soon not do it if the town was willing to say that that's a perfect... That's an acceptable location.
And would you be willing to put that in writing, that should the petition not pass, that you would remove it?
Yes. Yes. I mean, I would be obliged to anyway.
Well, I know.
But yes, and that makes perfect sense.
So the propane is actually liquefied petroleum, which is a fuel.
Yes.
Also, I wondered about, is it more than 10 feet from your house? Because there is a regulation about that.
Oh, yeah. No, the installer said, "Okay, you guys take measure out in it." And he did all those...
And there's a setback from the road, which is also... And I think my last question was, I believe, and I don't have a notation on it, in the Shoreland District, I believe there's also a prohibition for any excavation. Do you... Are you aware of that?
So there are constraints on structures and all. And they... It also talks about minimizing disturbance. And I think the fact that my house has been there since 1804, having a small hole dug in the ground and then covered back up is not the kind of disturbance that would make anything any worse.
I don't... I'm not the furthest thing from an expert, but I thought the concern where you were close to potential water with a buried tank was that if you have inundation, the tank float... Could float free and twist lines and break stuff off and then you have fire hazard.
Yeah, well, that's for above-ground tanks. This isn't below-ground tank.
No, but even with below-ground tanks, if it gets underwater, it'll float out of the ground. I thought... I'm not an expert.
Well, it's about ground contamination.
And contamination, yeah.
Seeping out and propane's...
I know that's one of the worries, but...
Aaron may not be aware that this is coming up in the meeting today.
What's that?
This is the propane tank at my house question. And you've thrown it over the wall to Michael Hensley.
Yep, it's a Hensley deal.
Okay, good.
Has he gotten back to you?
Not yet. I just...
Maybe it'll be a fire marshal deal.
Okay.
It could be. So do you have other comments?
No, but my request is for forbearance. I am happy to sign such...
To stay any action that would require you to go backwards.
Yes. Can we allow him to do that?
I am not exactly sure. I was looking for something that would say whether we could or not. My inclination would be if we have something in writing, we could delay corrective action until after town meeting, but I would like to definitely check with town council to make sure we have that authority.
Sure.
Because this is an ordinance. It's not a Bible, so it's the law.
So I will point out a couple of examples of forbearance that I've been aware of. I think the whole Smith family has received forbearance in some form. I don't know what that's... How that has been done. I think the other is more explicit. When the Mill Gardens suit occurred, the select board specifically said, "We intend not to enforce the ordinance while we rewrite that section of the ordinance to bring it up at town meeting." And so that assignment made that clear that, you know, please don't start anything new, but if something... If there's an existing use like this, we're not going to enforce the ordinance until the town votes.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Ben, do you have anything to say? Any thoughts?
I just did a quick search on it. It doesn't appear there's any environmental problem with leaking tanks. They either go into the soil or the air. That doesn't set aside safety problems or issues like that. Things popping up, but just because it's buried doesn't mean it won't leak because just a pebble will eat a hole in a certain tank.
Sure, yes. And the... You know, I think you're getting though to the the standards of care and installation of a buried tank, any place. I mean...
Yeah, but it should be sand, not sand with pebbles.
Let me tell you, they were very careful about the sand.
And is it double-walled, the tank, do you know?
So the tank is a standard buried propane tank, meets all the national standards, blah blah blah. I mean, I cannot personally attest to it, but the folks in Bradford that installed it, they're in the business of making sure that it complies. And I do know that there's sand in the buried lines going from the tank.
I'm just saying the quality of sand because I've seen tanks pulled up out of the ground and pebbles this big had eaten, well, into the steel.
Yes.
And they do...
I saw a lot of sand go into that. I won't say any more than... I can't attest to any more than that.
So I would be happy to propose that we delay taking any action until our next meeting. We'll have a chance to chat with our legal counsel.
Good.
And in the meantime, perhaps we could get a letter from you stating that...
I can reiterate what I said in my short note to you and say, "I am..."
Yep, and...
Completely...
Sign it and...
I'll sign it. Good.
That, for me, would give me reassurance, assuming I have the authority to take that action.
Okay. It might not be advisable to change the ordinance. To... I mean, it's gotta be... It was put in there for a reason. There's gotta be a reason for it. So in the future, if you change the ordinance, anybody can put their tanks in wetland areas.
Did you ask for rehearing on the variance?
No, I did not. It was very clear. I mean, the ordinance is absolutely clear that...
Prohibits it.
It's a buried fuel tank. There is no other way to characterize it. I actually... I did ask David propane and natural gas and he said, "That's a fuel." And I said, "I know it is."
Yeah, and it's a structure, so, yeah.
Yes.
Very good. I appreciate your candor.
Thank you very much.
And if Ben and David are okay with that, we will take this up at our next meeting and give you an answer.
And I will get you a...
A letter.
A letter.
When is the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. I'll see if I can get the information back from anything on the fire side.
It's next week.
Corrected. We are moving next week.
Yeah, I just emailed Michael.
Yeah, we have meetings every other day now.
Well, you have for the last 10. That's right. But I've just emailed Michael to remind him and usually that gets him going.
Okay. All right. So next meeting, next week, we'll have a response. Okay. And it's not quite 10:30, but are you expecting a cohort or...
Yeah, he's scrambled out of a class to come here and be here at 10:30 and then go right back as soon as it's over.
Okay.
So.
So we're gonna not take you right at this moment. We have minutes. October 5th, minutes. What do we wish to do with the minutes?
I have to abstain. I wasn't gonna have to do this.
No, I'll move him.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. And I will second thumb and Judy, I. We are approved.
One time we gave David a chance to move him, he wasn't here.
David abstained.
Dina, I realize I have copies.
Thank you.
For your records as well.
Perfect.
Let's see. I did not see a manifest.
No, there is not one.
No manifest. Excellent.
I didn't have time. There will be next week.
Okay. We look forward to it.
It looked like if it turned out to be a...
Ben, can you report to us about the report of wood cut and the request and the whole whatever that is all about, please? Because every time I read it, I get more confused.
Well, it was made to be confusing, but unfortunately, the contract with the logger was not a very good one, so it didn't assault and generate very much money from the wood. And what's Evan's title?
He's a state forester, state timber consultant.
We consulted with him and there's part of this cup was in Orford and part in Lime. And he's dealing with the Orford part. And we came down to what would be considered fair, which was 50%.
50%, yeah.
And I think we should go with that. It's, you know, uncomfortable when the best contract wasn't made for cutting the wood. I've had wood cuts done on my property and on burial properties and they were much more favorable to the landowner than this one.
Okay. So 50% is 500 and something?
No, it's right there.
I can read those right here.
50% is $480.58.
Okay. And so, Ben, would you like to make that motion that we do it?
Yes, I'll move it. Go ahead and sign this.
David, did you want to second that?
I'll second it.
And you're making an abatement also. You've already issued a warrant for the 66%. So you're gonna...
We're gonna abate it to 50%.
Right.
And if you had a pen, I'd sign it.
Goodness, look, I brought you an extra one today.
Warren, we're 60% and so we're gonna abate 10%?
No, it's 66%.
66.
I think.
Okay, abate 250%. I will second. Oh, David seconded that. And all those in favor say aye?
I'm aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. That's approved at 50%. And somebody just drove in. I don't know.
It might be Tom.
But thank you, Ben, for going over that and making it clear. And there he is. Perfect. I was timing.
I didn't say anything clear about it, but...
Chris, good?
You folks are up. Aaron and Tom, you plead for the fire department.
A one out?
You're up now, yes.
Brought these again. You got those too.
Me too.
Sure.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for taking the time to listen to us today. I'll try not to overwhelm everyone with data, but thank God we trust all others bring data.
Thank you. Oh, perfect.
So for folks who don't know, I'm Tom Fraley. I live at 30 Union Street here in Lime. I've lived here for 30-plus years, been on the Lime Fire Department, has an EMT for the last 20-plus years. And beyond that day job, I have a company that operates in New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, actually all of New England, but have about 500 employees scattered around those three states working. And one of the other things I do is run a volunteer search and rescue team that services New Hampshire and Vermont. So we report to Vermont State Police in Vermont and New Hampshire Fish and Game in New Hampshire for those calls. And my perspective and the reason I mention that is that I get a chance to work with hundreds of volunteer fire departments across New Hampshire and Vermont. Because just like a carryout on smarts or a missing person in Lime, you see local fire departments, volunteer teams come together and we work together a lot. So I get a perspective of how all those departments operate positively and negatively over the years. So we certainly are in a pretty difficult environment that started, believe it or not, before COVID, where volunteerism started to wane across the country, really. And it continues in that vein. So we're really struggling throughout New England for sure in the volunteer communities. So I start my discussion with that because I sometimes think it's a little bit of no brain, no headache that we don't recognize the resource we have here and the level of volunteerism that really supports our community here. A couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about potentially getting together and talking about, "How is it do we better manage maintaining our volunteer fire EMS systems?" You know, we sat in a room with about 35 people. I can tell you that no volunteer team with a population town like this has that kind of participation. So it's really a testimony to the strength of really talented and dedicated chiefs that we've had, you know, in this town. And it's a resource that I don't think we do a good job explaining to the folks in town what they all do for us. You know, hug your local fire department and EMS provider, please, when you're seeing them out of town. Because I don't think people recognize the amount of time and effort that's gone into managing, maintaining, recruiting, training this population. So the chart that you're looking at is basically kind of tells the tale of what's happened. Is the number of fire and EMS calls have seen an 83% increase in the last five years. So factors. We had COVID. We had an environment that we all like to brag about, aging in place is improving, you know. We have many more climate emergencies that we're all dealing with, even in a town like this. So all those things are adding up into a substantial increase. And as I'm sure Dina could attest to, the federal government, the state government loves paperwork. And everything requires more documentation, more effort to manage this. And it's no different in the fire and EMS side of things. The administration side of that job is just exploding. So when you take the number of calls that we're dealing with, the increase and everything, management of our wonderful little volunteer group has become a lot more challenging. We've kind of done an injustice to the town to not explain what kind of pressure is on our volunteer group and how can we better manage it. So if you look at it, you know, and this is where we're really coming to you folks to say, not only do we have some budgetary concerns, but we also have a sales problem here where we really need to get out to folks in town and explain, "What's our gap right now? What's our deficit from this perspective? And how do we best be really good stewards of everybody's tax dollars and make sure that we're applying to the right places? But make sure you understand that we gotta catch up, okay? We've fallen way behind, both from a capital expenditure perspective and also from how we're supplying resources to these volunteers to make sure we keep them safe and that when folks say 911, we're meeting... Keep them safe and that when folks say nine one one, we're meeting their expectation, you know, that we show up. So uh, big issues on management is administrative, as I mentioned, is that we really need to come up with a, a solution to that that says. We need to put a little bit more resource into the administrative management side of the department, the paperwork behind it. How do we better stipend folks who are doing this for us on a volunteer basis, you know, we're, like I said, we're lucky to have volunteers and folks who. Live in town, but they all have full-time jobs, you know, everybody's got day jobs and are devoting more and more hours and time to this, we gotta administratively manage it better. So that's, that's one part of it. Uh, simple things like the fact that we do home inspections, that, you know, we ask our volunteer fire department to do home inspections for burner replacements, electrical and things like that. That needs to be an administrative uh task that's outlined to an outside professional. And we probably need to propose something that fees our residents that says, if you want an inspection, just like every other town in the upper valley and all across both states. You put a new burner in, the fire inspection's gonna cost you, there's a permit fee associated with it, you have an outside inspector that comes in and does it. And so it's a zero-based budget scenario, but it's not something that we have our volunteers doing, and they shouldn't be really doing that sort of stuff.
So who, so excuse me, who would do it?
Well, we hire a professional third-party outside firm to do those inspections, with the town, we contract with this service. To be able to manage those, they charge the town a certain amount, we charge the resident a certain amount.
So would it be more appropriate to have a part of the permitting process through planning and zoning?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, it's part of the application process, gotta have a fire inspection, here's the fee. So that's a way to eliminate some of that management, the other thing is that, you know, to, to manage this many volunteers, it takes some effort and. You know, it's not just ours, but it's also an assessment of what's it worth, right? You know, when we look at our total fire budget. Uh, it's not even equal to one full-time fire paramedic person in any of the full-time departments in the upper valley. So we're, we're getting a really good bang for our buck, but we're underestimating what, you know, the cost of some of that is. Um, equipment, and I think Aaron's gonna talk a little bit more about specifically budget dollars and equipment, but on the equipment side, you know, all the volunteers respond with their own vehicles. And we've been in a program where we've replaced our EMS vehicles with uh fire police vehicles and things of that effect, and you get what you pay for. There, there are vehicles that don't spec specifically for that purpose, we spend a lot of money trying to rehab them to a point where they are functional, and then. They're old, they're tired, they've been used a lot by police, so we end up having a vehicle that doesn't quite meet that. With all the climate emergencies and things like that, we end up having an awful lot of our volunteers who happen to have pickup trucks. Load their pickup trucks with the barriers and cones and, and everything and tape and go out and do these things, we really need to have a vehicle that's more specifically focused, you know, on that. Uh, so the thought process and part of the budget proposal would be to talk about that kind of a combination. At the end of the day, what we really want to do is help the budget committee and help the select board be in a position where. The town understands, the people, the residents understand, this is a, this is a really good use of our dollars. So when we're sitting here talking about a, a thirty five or forty percent increase in what our budget would be, here's why. So we wanna help, we wanna be part of it, we would like to get out there and really do sort of an advertising and media campaign with the residents of town to say, here's what your volunteers really do for you. And what we, you know, what, what our needs are, being that we sort of fell behind in communicating the needs.
So if I could ask, when you come to the budget committee, which they will start having regular meetings next week?
I think we're next week on.
Are you next week? That's great, and they will appreciate that from select board's side, what I think we would like to see, that's okay. If you can prioritize a forty or fifty percent increase, more than likely will not happen, so do you want a little bit in each pot? Do you have one pot that's more important than the other? Um, if, I'm sure you know, that we're limited resources.
I get it, but we're also talking about thirty grand as opposed to a one point five million dollar thing that just happened at school, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, but we don't have any control.
No, but, but I'm just saying, there, there are things that we have fallen behind on and we're trying to keep a, a core group going. And it may take us days.
And we think if we did a good job of really getting out to the community and explaining to them what this is about, uh, and, and what the real cost is and perspective to what we're really saving, because. You know, we've got volunteers devoting on average twenty five hundred hours a year to supporting fire and EMS, I think they might. Agree with the nominal increase that we're talking about, percentage sounds like a lot, the dollars are not. So I understand what everybody's up against, I, you know, just like all of you and the taxpayer in town always wanna, and I run a business and. I don't get to increase my budget every year.
I, I don't, you know, this, this sounds like a nominal amount, but certainly you brought up the school, and when that school meeting happened, they were. Well organized and had no concern about the rest of the town, what it was taking away from the rest of the town to do that one point two million plus.
Two point five, where are you?
Five, including a hundred thousand dollar trade.
But, and it did, and that, and that, that's the unfortunate part.
Yeah, we think we can do a better job of selling that, okay, to the community.
Well, okay, I mean, certainly we support that, but I would just.
I think you'll, you can, you have something to sell, and I, I do have issues with, with the school and the way it went, right?
Yes, and that's very important to have the community behind you and to let them know why that's important, but I would say to you. I have some familiarity with the budget committee and the members, that question is gonna come up, and you might wanna think about whether or not you wanna make a suggestion. If we can't get the whole basket, how would we like to allocate?
Yeah, I think Judy, we've sort of said, we don't wanna play the negotiating game, we, we wanted to put on the table a very honest and upfront bare minimum. Of what we think is critical to the department's surviving and moving forward, so, you know, which is not a strategy maybe other departments employ, but it's one that says. We're, we're, we want, we don't want fifty percent of something, we want a hundred, you know, or a hundred percent of nothing, you know, we really would prefer to, and I appreciate the, the thought process, but. That's where we think a campaign to the town and the community with something so vital to, you know, what makes it all work and how critically. Uh, important is to maintain, you know, that, that staff and that group that's keeping us going. Okay, well.
Okay, well, thank you.
I, I honored my time contract again, yeah.
I know, I wasn't keeping time this time, so.
Sorry.
You're gonna have to learn public speaking something.
We have, we have two quick comments, I think, from the public?
Is this, you proposed thirty thousand dollar increase, or is, um, uh, over the current budget?
Correct.
The op, just the operating budget?
Yes. Twenty six, twenty six.
And for what it's worth. The, the getting somebody in to do the inspections, I think is a very healthy. For the volunteer idea and a great idea.
Yeah.
And how much money might the inspections provide to, um?
Well, the, the thought process would be that it'd be sort of zero-based budget, so there's probably. Some consideration for the town administration fee associated with it, plus the actual cost of the inspection, so that, you know, it's really, we want it to be a wash. I mean, that's how I would justify it to the folks in town, say.
That's not gonna be a way to cut this twenty six thousand dollars.
No, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a zero.
Rich.
So I, I wanted to say a couple of quick things, uh, first off, you guys do a terrific job, I was, I was in this room when there was a, an emergency call. And I was astonished from the time the nine one one call went in. I wasn't watching the clock very carefully, but it was six or seven minutes when people were storming through this door, so. You guys are amazing, so, and, and then the other thing I'll say is, as a member of the budget committee, I am coming also to these meetings and I'm hearing. How much time people spend on just administrative stuff, and. I mean, there's the interesting stuff, which is the meeting with people and doing good work, and then there's all the paperwork, and I would certainly support. Something in the budget committee to say that the town needs to compensate somebody to do the unfund parts at least. And maybe even some of the fund parts, so.
Right.
And to fairly compensate folks who are managing a, a fairly large volunteer group, you know. Oh, yeah.
Okay, next up, thank you for.
I'm just gonna give you the, the C R F thing is from twenty twenty two, and it basically just has been updated, the current numbers.
C R F is capital reserve funds.
Yep. So this is, sorry. Uh, this is the form I did in twenty twenty two, that kind of just goes, hey, we're funding at a much better level than we were prior to that. Um, so I don't, I, I don't have a huge issue with where the capital reserve fund is, it's a little bit under what we requested, but I think we can, we're, we're making it work. The bigger issue that I see on the horizon is just the apparatus replacement, and just putting that on the radar to say, hey. Current value, what it costs to replace today versus when it comes up due, um, it's accelerated and painfully so.
What is apparatus?
Uh, all of our fire trucks, so, uh, the engine we just purchased in twenty twenty is now fifty, almost fifty percent more expensive to purchase today. Which is, it's nuts, it's now at a five percent increase and it seems to be stabilizing.
And, and we also have a kind of a big number for the breathing apparatus?
Yep, yep, so we, there's an increase there, which is tied to the compressor and our ability to fill our, our.
Scotty packs.
Yeah, Scotty packs, so, um, yeah, that's. It's expensive.
Well, and that's what's happening with the, you know, highway stuff too, but I think it's pretty clear and probably the budget committee will have to have a discussion about this at some point, but. You know, the, the only way to fund these affordably is to start spreading things out, and we're gonna have to have individual loans for. At least a portion of some of the vehicles.
And that's kind of like what we did with the engine one.
As we go, I think, exactly.
So, and I think that's, there's a hundred different ways to look at this from a capital thing, and that's, um, outside of like my. Pay grade, but what I'll say is, I, I think we've done a good job in helping control that major stair step that occurred by doing the, the loan provisions. Hopefully financing comes down to a, a rate that's more reasonable going forward, but, um, yeah, there's some big numbers out there on the horizon, so I just wanna make sure that people see it.
What, what do you anticipate spending on the horizon, I mean, we got two of the three trustees of the trust fund sitting here.
Um, for which, as far as.
With the capital reserve fund.
Capital reserve right now.
Six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in there or something?
I don't know what is allocated towards us, um, I, I don't see that sheet anymore, I, I think we have about thirty eight, thirty nine by numbers what we had from, from our funding.
Yeah, I don't usually individually allocate it out, it's a total amount that we look forward to, that we need, but, you know, like you said, when you're talking about a truck that. We, we bought for seven hundred thousand and now it's one point two million dollars.
Yeah, I didn't bring that table at all about.
You can't make the difference, well, you can't make the differences up, you're just kidding.
It's just, and I think you, you saw a massive escalation from twenty twenty four, a few years that, that took all the numbers except the numbers, what is good. I mean, I say it's good, but it is more stable, and the two different vendors I spoke to for apparatus that sell the majority of the fire trucks in New England said five percent feels like a good number right now. Assuming the government doesn't come out some emissions change or something else that, that throws it out the window, um, and we're, yeah.
Your firefighting safety equipment at last year's town meeting is capital reserve fund was sixty one thousand.
Okay.
And so.
And I think we spent.
And I think you have, let's see, what else, you have another.
The A E D one.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, that's not on there.
That's not on here.
No, it's a separate, separate item.
Yeah, and, and so the, the vehicle.
Do you have the bar holder stuff with the one?
But that's like six hundred and some thousand dollars.
That's the capital reserve fund is six twenty four last year.
Minus, minus the truck.
Yes.
That we haven't paid for yet, that just is coming in at two forty three, I think it is, and that, you know, so there's.
Yeah, no, this is not updated at all, but I'm just saying this is what went into last year's report, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if we're, ideally we're at twenty three, seven fifty, to make sure like, hey, we're hitting this, this mark, and I kind of projected it out for. Through twenty thirty three, um, and there's, it drops down a little bit in a couple of years because we get caught up with some of the past on two items, um. We're funding at twenty, we were at five, I'm not, we made a huge step forward and we, we can work with that and we can continue to figure out ways to, to find that to go forward, so.
Well, and as you know, we, we try our best to share the limited resources and nitpick every little item we can, which makes some people crazy.
No, I, I, I get it, and that's, I, I pay taxes here, our businesses, I, my business is here, I, I understand. I don't, it's hard, like, I, I see what we need to do, and we need to find the balance to figure out how to get there. Uh, at the same point, I don't want people to have the town continue to become more unaffordable so we lose the multi-generations that have been here.
Right.
So I, I get it, I, I understand, but at the same point, I wanna make sure that we continue to have thirty people showing up when our neighbors are in need.
Yeah.
And that we're in a unique position right now in the valley to, to have that group, so.
Does the, I mean, doing independent fundraising, aside from tax dollars, do you, do we, is there any sort of effort to provide charitable support or?
We have for big projects.
Yeah, for the firehouse.
Right, firehouse, we've done it for big projects, um, I would love to say that I have the time to cut away to do that as well, but I, I do not. Um, many years ago, we, we used to do that and we spent more time fundraising than running the department, and there's a limited pool of time, that, that's basically what it came to. I would love to do more on that side, we, we don't have the capacity right now.
Maybe for big capital items, like, the next big thing is gonna be this truck, right?
Yeah, and historically, the town has supported the fire department, uh, in fundraising campaigns towards specific goals like a fire station or A E Ds or things like that. We've had less success with saying we're replacing a vehicle. Um, historically, we've just had less success in that, so.
Well, I, you know, I think that's realistic because many people don't replace their vehicles as often as.
Right, right.
Possibly they should, and so if I'm driving a fifteen-year-old vehicle, maybe you could stretch yours out a little.
Right, and our, our big trucks are on twenty four year cycles, um, the two thousand four right now, ideally we'd be going to town meeting to talk about discussing, but we're looking at potentially stretching that. As far as we can because it's pre-emission, doesn't have all that depth, it doesn't have all the stuff that mechanically is going wrong, so we've looked at a number of scenarios, including like retro fitting and sending it out for a month, have all the electronics replaced. To try to stretch it out another six or seven years, so we're looking at all the options.
That's great, and that's what you were talking about, to get out to the community to let them know what you're doing and, um, I'm sure there are a lot of folks who really don't understand that.
No, it's a, it's, um, I certainly didn't, until I came back and you get more involved and everything kind of goes like, okay, we're going out, we're helping our neighbors, and then. Then you start getting more roles in the fire department and then it becomes more and more apparent that there's a, a never-ending wave of things that I try to keep up with, so. Um, our, our goal is to make this so whoever replaces me can step into a situation that, um, is more sustainable, I guess is the best way.
Yeah, if Aaron raised his hand about the volunteering thing, I was gonna tackle him.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, but that's, and this is just, again, I just wanted to give you some placeholders, I've got it set to begin having a conversation with the budget committee as well, but I just wanted to at least put this on the radar that, hey, this is what we're seeing for indications on. Vehicle replacement, what the, what the run is looking like, and that's the draft budget as of today, I'm waiting on some firm figures back from a couple more vendors, um, one of which I got this morning, which won't move anything, so. I think the only thing I have outstanding is to see if that insurance goes up this year, but. I think the only thing I have outstanding is to see if that insurance goes up this year, but I think we started the first year of a three-year cycle last year. I think it was like fifty-seven, eighty-seven, so.
It never changed, it didn't even change last year, so.
Which is great.
I suspect, yeah, I don't know, I don't do, I haven't heard from it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
I'm gonna turn that with my wife. I don't wanna play the negotiation.
Okay, we have a spare bedroom.
That's gonna work.
No.
We have someone here who can counsel you on possibly a better alternative method. Okay, let's see.
First do no harm.
We, we have a request for proposal draft for working on the common, updating it, getting, we hope, ready to take some action there. And, um.
I was confused by that, Judy. How at all does that, uh, RFP, um, interconnect with some of the things we've been talking about in terms of the road behind the common and changes to parking and such?
It's meant to be like, to see what ideas.
I believe this was Ben's suggestion.
Somebody would come up to, right.
Because the, the select board is in charge of the physicality of the town. And we can make any changes that we want there. But Ben thought it might be good to, in moving forward, which we're hoping to do next spring, to get a landscaper, someone who is used to working with town commons and can say, here's some ideas, what would you like to do? And then, yeah, I mean, we could, we've sort of danced around the issue of the back of the common road. When push comes to shove, we will need to make the decision as to what we're gonna do there. The same with the common, with fencing or not fencing and planting trees and. So I think that Dana has come up with a pretty good description. We can send it out to a number of landscape-type people. And I would also say at this point that anyone, I don't envision reforming the common, uh, committee. Thank you, I got distracted. But anyone with suggestions should send them in. Send an email either to the, probably to the select board's email, um, which Dana, it is Lime Select Board. What is the email? Perfect.
Um, along those same lines, how would we proceed if we wanted to get further information about putting up the, a, a lighted crosswalk sign between the school and the library? Do we need to get an, do we need to, is that an RFP sort of thing or is that just something we ask Sean to do or?
I think we can, we, we have detailed information because that was on the table maybe three or four years ago. We can reconstitute that and I think, um, there are two ways to do that. But again, I would suggest that we not form a committee, but that we put out there, let people know that we are really serious about this and we're gonna start having discussions. And anyone that has a comment or a thought about it should email the select board with that. And Sean could get us some numbers, some updates, I think.
Yeah, I think so. I can go back and revisit it and, because I don't remember. I'm, I'm, I was thinking it ended up on the school, at the school.
No.
District meeting being discussed because it was the school.
It was, the last I remember was, there was a small committee, had a select board member, had a school board member, had someone from the library. I think there was one other person.
Right.
And COVID came along and all the committees stopped me.
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why I need to.
But.
But everything is there.
Everything is underground.
Underground, the underground stuff, everything is all there. It's just getting to.
And again, if we wanted.
Yeah, but, but who sells that and how much does it cost?
Well, we can find out. And there's all kinds of information already within what's already been done, is what I'm saying. We need to pull that back out.
We'll pull it to the forefront and we should definitely have it. We can either do it as soon as we think we can or have it in the budget for next year. And we will have to, my understanding is we should, we three make this tough decision, but get input.
Yeah, I agree with that. We should have a, we should have a notice hearing and let people come and explain why they think it's a good or a bad idea and.
And what you decide or what you're thinking about doing needs to go to the state too, because it's a state.
It's a state road. But they had approved the last one, so.
But they will only approve.
The one they want.
Certain signs. You can't, you can't pick one that's, you know, not a flashing one or not a, they have all these rules, you have to.
So you see them in Hannover and Lebanon and at the hitch. And those are all within the town regulations. So the state has what they want. This is a state road, so we'll have to.
So you're gonna put me out of business by standing out there on Wednesday morning?
No. I, I think you could still stand out there. I think that would probably still be important.
When you're not there, we're putting.
Oh, all right, put those people out of business.
When anybody wants to cross, like during the day, the kids go across, no. We value your contribution.
I was, I was being facetious here, actually, I did have a, would it be possible to see the draft RFP? To circulate the draft RFP?
Oh, from the common?
Yeah.
Well, I have a feeling it would be possible. Do we have a, um, I suppose we should take a motion and a vote on this. How do we feel about the draft RFP? Okay, move second, Judy I, and would you scoop this on down the end?
What, does that, does that have all the changes? That doesn't have all the changes.
That was in our packet.
What I have sitting here has handwritten changes on it, so can, can I send it to you, please?
That would be perfect, thank you.
Just to double check, thank you, Judy, you're probably so worried.
Well. Drive her crazy, don't I?
I'm like, no, it's just really been a little overwhelming this week, so.
Yeah, this has no handwritten notes on it, so.
I'm like, not prepared.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the draft RFP?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, I, okay. You can see it as soon as Dana sends it to me.
As soon as Dana sends it to me, I will look at it.
Okay.
And not a moment before.
I, I think it's a good idea to have some sort of a meeting. I think the board ought to develop a kerfuffle index, a probable kerfuffle index of those things that are likely to lead to people storming into the meeting. And anytime that hits like a three on five, make, make some sort of a meeting for people.
Uh, ruins our spontaneous fun that happens.
Oh, yes.
I don't know. I've had times.
Well, this is one of those types of, of, um, proposals that has a, a very small group of people who are directly impacted in potentially a negative way. And so anytime you do something like that, those individuals, you can expect them to be unhappy with it, understandably, and so.
Barack is the one that's being court.
Exactly.
Yes, very good.
But then we get testimony of people who try to cross the road and almost get hit by cars and.
And maybe there's something that can be done to, you know, decrease the costs that are imposed on the people who are affected.
Well, Rich just volunteered to do twelve-hour duty. Two-hour duty.
Well, I'm thinking we know, somebody's gonna have to come.
Look, if you, if you're sitting in your living room and every couple, you know, half hour, your curtains light up with orange flashing because there's a light outside.
But that's not a reality.
But maybe there's a way to shield or to, to, maybe there's a way to structure the light so that it reduces the impact on somebody's house. I, I don't know what.
The reality is, it might be five times during the day and it won't light up your curtains.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
The only time it'll go off at night is if there's a function at the school and people are walking back and forth and pushing the button.
Those are things that are free for the public about.
Never.
Never noticed.
Never even noticed it, right.
Yeah.
They've got them across from St. Thomas Church during the Hanover, and it's invaluable at night because dark students wear black and cross the road with.
I'm surprised that more aren't hit.
And, and David, when I pull out all the stuff for, to review, you'll see that all that has been addressed.
And we'll just readdress it and move forward.
Right. Yeah.
Let's have some really fun time now. We are going to have non-public at the end of this meeting, but until then, let's do a budget review. Dana.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, going into the fourth quarter.
It looked, it looked just like the, um, spending report.
Yes, it, it does, it's on the bottom of your face. We are at, going into the fourth quarter, the beginning of October, thirty-three point eight-four percent of the budget is left. And we do have to recognize that we have some big numbers that we know are going to be coming up. And, but that's not, that's not bad for going in there, um.
No, it's not bad at all. We just have to pray for not a wicked winter.
Early winter.
Um, Scotty made it back from Florida? Hmm, not yet. Did he enjoy his night in Florida?
They're okay, they're okay, I talked to him this morning. Well, he did.
Vacation, I hope?
Yes, yes.
Well deserved.
Yes, well deserved.
Um, so let's see, if, Dana, do you have any?
Do we have any questions?
Thing in specific you wanna shoot in here? Where is my arrow? Well, I have, this is again, nitpicking.
Oh.
Budget committee expenses.
Yep.
What, what are budget committees?
Thirty-nine sixty. It was probably to post a meeting or something.
Oh.
I don't know, I have to look back and see.
Sure, we had a couple of public hearings extra.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I know, as I said, nitpicking, that's my job.
And I usually put that under the selectment, but, or under their advertising, but I thought, well, we had to start showing true expenses.
There you go, yes.
Well, it's thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
It's really.
That sounds like enough postage to, yeah.
Yeah, advertise and whatever.
It's the, yeah.
It was not the wild meetings. Yeah, with refreshments.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't the fun stuff.
Be difficult to imagine that group having a wild year.
Yeah. Well, I think there've been a couple.
Let's, let's go back on topic.
Can we double check the, um, the town council's line? We've spent fifty thousand already on legal.
Okay, I'll check it.
We've got a busy year, legal one.
We have, we have referred to that quite a bit.
Well, we ended up, and we ended up cutting that line down lower because we thought we were gonna be okay, but. So anyways, yes, I will double check that, check.
Another thing I wonder, you're probably all over this, Dana, I'm sure, but, um, we've had a, a bunch of, um, consultation and discussion with attorneys about the two Smith properties. And we had a warrant that specifically allocated money for.
Right.
That, so, I don't know, from an accounting perspective, I would, I would imagine that those, that portion of our legal expenses ought to be segregated and put towards the money that.
Yes.
That could be the difference, yeah.
It probably is the difference.
It probably is the difference, yeah.
There's been another, uh, one or two other cases too, so.
Yep, specific, okay. And. Ben, any thoughts on that, where we are going into this last quarter?
None whatsoever, we won't know until we spend all our money and we got some left or we don't.
Right.
And of course, there's individual lines that are over already.
Yep.
There always is, but you know.
But each, I, I'm pretty sure that each department is still okay, which is what I usually look at. And then, of course, we hear from our police chief that we keep robbing his budget to do things for other departments. That we'll see, uh, we now have a two officer department, perhaps. We will not be able to do that in the future.
Well, you won't, but when you make, when we make the budgets, we don't make them saying, oh, we're not gonna have a second officer, so.
No, that's true.
You gotta have the money there.
Oh, I know, I know.
And then it's easy to say, oh, we know we have extra because, but that's not true anymore.
Right, and we get the.
Which is exciting.
Everybody's jumping at the bits. Okay, so let's go from this very quick review of where we are, if there are no real questions, to twenty-twenty-five budget goals. And I did send one of my many emails to Dana that drives her crazy. I came up with, I think it was yesterday, a three point three percent Northeast New England CPI. And I asked her to run some numbers for, at this point, would be the cost of living increase. We haven't seen those yet, she's been working on it. And then where we wanna go from there in terms of looking at the other budget items. We're gonna have fire department coming in. Not sure who else we've heard from, the library.
Library, she hasn't.
Library budget, the last, um, meeting was looking at about a two point five percent requ, increase request.
Overall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she's passed in her budget, I don't have it here today because we weren't gonna talk about that. But I mean, I have no, like, budget sheet for you guys because, I mean, I can figure out the, the personnel at a three point three percent increase, but that doesn't help.
Well.
Because you haven't done your evaluations.
We haven't done the evaluations.
But I think it's important to know whether, one of the goals from you guys is an overall three point three increase? Is that what you're talking about budget-wise, not just personnel, but overall bottom line?
Well, I don't know how you could do that if you're giving all the personnel a three point three percent increase because then you're gonna cut somewhere else in the budget.
Right.
Do we have, have you guys thought about this at all or not? Not, this is gonna be a short conversation.
Yep.
Okay.
And just to make it hard, do we know what the, the health insurance and all is gonna be?
Don't even know yet, Chris, so.
Cause last year, that was awful, it was like ten, eleven, twelve percent, something like that.
I think it was about twelve.
It was, yeah, it was. I should be getting that stuff.
Yeah.
Very soon.
Yeah, it seems like it's a little late, but.
No, no, it's actually not. And usually, you know, I, I wish we could keep our budget, wait for the Budget Committee meetings till after we get that stuff.
Well, yeah.
But I always have to go through the first or second meeting.
Without that known.
Without the benefits numbers, so.
Okay.
So we'll see.
So, yeah, we.
It will be what it is.
It will be what it is. What I'm gonna ask, Dana, at least for me, I would love to see the increase, the salary increase numbers. And then, um, we'll look at last year's budget from the town report and see where we think we're gonna go. If you and I can sit down one day and go through it. That'd be great.
Yeah, if you and I could sit down and get some sort of a rough draft.
That would be really awesome.
Then we could send it out to these other two gentlemen to look at.
Look, I'm, I may have misspoken, the, the library board approved a budget with three point two-three percent increase at, at our last meeting Monday. I don't wanna speak for Judy, I think these are the final figures.
Okay, and that's based on, a, a month ago, the CPI was three point two-three and now it's three point three.
I have it somewhere, so.
Okay.
Her budget, she already sent it to me.
Yep, okay, so let's, you and I get together next week.
Good.
This week's already crazy.
Yeah.
It's almost over. And with that, I think, um, I'm gonna move to go into RSA ninety-one colon A three-two C Reputation on non-public session. And following that, we. And following that, we will excuse Dana and then we will do ninety-one colon dash A colon three, Roman numeral two A, dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee. And I think we have four that we're doing.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Even aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye.
Now just say all those letters backwards.
And I need you to go into a legal one also.
Ah, okay. So we'll have three.
I want to thank you guys. This is where the rubber hits the road, where, where you make all these really difficult decisions between what you'd like to do and what you can afford to do and how are you gonna be fair. And this is the toughest part.
Yeah, it is.
Like he said, I agree.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Everybody's got their hand out.
Well, that's really hard and
Yeah, exactly, sure.
And I, you know, every year
And none of our bad causes.
That's exactly right. And nothing is too extravagant and
No, we don't have any control over the school, unfortunately.
Well, we try.
I'm aware of a little town in New Hampshire that when there was police funding around, bought themselves a hundred and twenty thousand dollar police Escalade full of, of equipment, riot equipment, that would have done well in New York City. And, um,
What town was that?
somehow the people in the teen area didn't think that was a great idea.